Good morning, just morning, morning slash afternoon, right on the dot. Everyone, welcome to the Economic and Cultural Development Committee meeting this day, the sixteenth of July 2024. And in attendance, we've got Deputy Mayor Johnic, Mayor Harding, councillor Antonelli, and also online, we've got councillor Cullen. You there? Did he say yes?
Yes, I'm here, yeah.
Hello.
There you go.
I'm going to move for an adjournment for thirty minutes for us to take lunch. So I'll move that. I have a second, Mayor Harding. So we'll come back at twelve thirty on... Sorry? Okay, so I'll just put that to the vote, all those in favour.
Twelve thirty, was it?
Yeah, twelve thirty, yep, on the dot. Councillor Cullen, you'll be back at twelve thirty?
Yes, affirmative, yes.
Okay, thank you. Be back twelve thirty. Meeting...
In the room, we've got Deputy Mayor Johnic, Mayor Harding. And councillor Cullen, are you online?
Yes, Chair.
Great, thank you. Um, I'll now move on to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of Parrot people. Are there any declarations of interests on any of the agenda today? Uh, yes, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Chair. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, councillor Nicole Johnic, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item number four, titled event sponsorship. Oh, sorry, item number, yep, four, quarterly event sponsorship and ticket allocation report. Um, I am a LifePass holder with my husband of Willabang Raceway, but I am not a member of the executive and there is no financial benefit to me. I would like to propose or move that I remain in the meeting in relation to item four. And that I can participate. Thank you.
All right. We've had this come up before, haven't we? You've declared this before?
Yes, on a separate item. Yeah, yep.
So I'm moved that you stay, yeah? You're gonna, you'll stay in?
Yep, that's what I've moved, yep.
I note too that this is a report on afterwards. Like, it's not, it's not a decision. It's a, um, it's literally a report on what's happened in the past. So I, I don't think there is a conflict of interest. So I'm getting some indications. So I move that Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnic participates and votes on item four, titled quarterly event sponsorship and ticket allocation report. Because there's no personal financial benefit to her and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the financial decision is made in the public interest.
Okay, well, so I'll move that.
I'll second that because. And we vote?
Yep, we vote. Councillor Cullen, do you agree that Deputy Mayor states?
Affirmative, thank you.
That's the three of us carried that forward. So, um, are there any business outstanding? No? No. As there's no business outstanding, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is confirmation of minutes of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, number one, 2024 of the 11th of June 2024. I move the minutes. Do I have a seconder? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, open up for discussion? No discussion? Put it to the vote, all those in favour? Councillor Cullen?
Yes, Chair, affirmative.
Um, so that's all of us. We've just, councillor Antonelli has just come, moved, uh, come into the, the committee meeting. So, uh, that's carried. So now we'll move on to item three, which is the officer reports. And the first on the agenda is the event sponsorship, 2024 Indigenous Wild Food and Cultural Festival. Um, can I have the relevant officer come up, please?
Hello, Carly Gregory, manager of marketing and promotions.
Thank you, Miss Gregory. Um, can I just, I've just got a couple of questions. Um, so I think I did read in there that it will be an occurring event. You're gonna try and get it as an occurring event?
That's everything we're aiming for, that it would be an annual event in our city. Um, it's already obviously an established event. Um, so for me, um, you know, one thing we're really aiming for, we have some amazing First Nations experiences and events that are run from groups like New Knuckle Yagura that are based here in Red Bank Plains, but are being held outside the city. So we are working super hard to bring them back home and show that we can support and grow these events in our city here.
Great, great. And was there a reason why they can't have it at, it was at Rockleigh in Brisbane?
Um, basically because as part of our event attraction, we had identified it as an event that we thought should sit in Ipswich. That we could, um, you know, put in our festivals, which has a whole leveraging campaign and enables a marketing arm that they're not otherwise getting. They're a standalone event currently. Um, and I, I, I think they were very gracious and came and spoke to us multiple times and eventually agreed that it would be great to bring it back to Ipswich.
And they are a Red Bank Plains registered business, which I'm super excited that it's a whole package.
Yeah, it's fabulous. And look, um, you know, it has been a negotiation. Um, we had put forward some potential venues. Um, and we've come up with one that they're, they're really happy with and we're really happy with because it's in the city. It also supports another, you know, um, venue in our city, being the Turf Club. So that's great for them as well. So, yeah, really great with the outcome. Really happy with it.
The only, the last question I've got, I've just got to read it out because it was in the report. So the recommendation includes in-kind support through the completion of an independent impact study by an industry-specific market research organisation. I'm just saying, I'm just, um, trying to get clarification on the word recommendation. So like recommendation is it, will it be done or we're gonna certainly?
Yeah, so we, um, as we do with lots of events that we support and sponsor in the city, we would really like some detailed intel that's actually data-driven around this event. Because at the moment it's quite anecdotal. Yes, we have some ticketing information and that kind of thing that we've taken on board. Um, they haven't, this group, done an event impact study on this event previously. And I think the reality is this event is well-known, well-regarded and would be absolutely, um, entitled to funding streams outside councils. And we can think of some off the top of our head, but we would need that event impact study to help support that. So as part of our capacity building, while they did ask for more cash, what we're proposing is cash support based on we, we think's a fair assessment of our assessment. We didn't think it was worth the 30K in cash, but we had put forward, we could support them with an in-kind, as in the event impact study. We would have that info to build with our data of what happens with events in the city, but also it would enable them to secure funds from other streams.
Yeah, and make it, yeah, going forward as well. That's great. Thank you.
And in time, we would absolutely put a dollar figure to that, but we currently have a tender out for event impact. Research. So once that's finalized, we'll have an exact dollar figure on the value of that as well as in kind.
Awesome. Thank you. That's great. Anyone else got, yep, Deputy Mayor?
Uh, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I, councillor Nicole Johnic, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item number three, event sponsorship, 2024 Indigenous Wild Food and Cultural Festival. I, um, have no relation to the party named for the grant. However, the location for the event proposed is the Ipswich Turf Club. And I am an executive, I'm the treasurer of the Board of the Ipswich Turf Club Incorporated. So I will, um, propose that I leave the meeting and not vote on the content. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks for, um, alerting the meeting that soon as you knew. Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Have we got any more questions for Miss Gregory?
Yes, through the Chair. Um, just looking at the, um, obviously in the past we've had really great events at Harding's Paddock as well. Um, was there a consideration for this event to be at Harding's Paddock rather than the Turf Club?
Uh, yeah, I think it's part of our review of Galvanice last year in the cultural and country event. Fabulous event, fabulous location, quite challenging to, to get to Harding's Paddock though, I think, for a festival like that. No public transport, um, quite challenging, multiple public transport if you did need to get there. So accessibility was an issue. Um, even though we love, love the venue, um, and just not visible too. It's really hard to encounter. You're not just driving past and happen to see it there. So we'd already had a review to say if we were continuing with cultural and country, we were going to look at an alternate site. Um, for us, this is the ultimate goal of having a First Nations-led event within the festival, which is fabulous.
Um, in the report talks about, um, a $30,000 grant. Is that what, is that what they applied for? And then with council's own assessment?
Correct. So, yeah, um, $30,000 is what they applied for. We, um, obviously looked at what they'd had previously, which was $20,000 from Brisbane City Council. We looked through the assessment. Um, I would say that this assessment was slightly underdone for $30,000 in terms of economic benefit, even though the social benefit is immense. Um, and the panel came back to me to sort of basically say that why they'd chosen the 21, 21,500 was, that was around the cost of staging, lighting, the workshop, so that the real core infrastructure to bring that event to our site, because those things aren't, um, built into the venue that they're choosing.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Any more questions?
Yeah, it's not more, not more of a, just a confirmation. We Care used to actually be based in the, pretty much the centre of Ipswich years ago. They used to be where Alara, uh, currently have their operations there on Salisbury Road, used to be where We Care ran their operations. So, um, I'm not sure when they moved out to Red Bank Plains, but they did originate very strongly in Ipswich and also had a connection with the Perga, um, elders out there at, at Perga. So.
Yeah.
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 We've had this come up before, haven't we? You've declared this before.
Yes, on a separate item. Yeah, yep.
So I'm move that you stay, yeah? You're gonna, you'll stay in?
Yep, that's what I've moved, yep.
I note too that this is a report on afterwards, like it's not, it's not a decision, it's a, um, it's literally a report on what's happened in the past, so I, I don't think there is a conflict of interest. So I'm getting some indications. So I move that Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnic participates and votes on item four, titled Quarterly Event Sponsorship and Ticket Allocation Report, because there's no personal financial benefit to her, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the financial decision is made in the public interest.
Okay.
So I'll move that.
I'll second that, because.
And we vote?
Yep, we vote. councillor Cullen, do you agree that Deputy Mayor states?
Affirmative, thank you.
That's the three of us carried that forward. So, um, are there any business outstanding? No, no. As there's no business outstanding, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is confirmation of minutes of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, number one, two thousand and twenty-four, of the eleventh of June, two thousand and twenty-four. I move the minutes. Do I have a seconda? Uh, that's Mayor Harding, open for discussion. No discussion. Um, put it to the vote, all in favour?
Affirmative.
Oh, thank you councillor Cullen. So that's unanimous and carried. Uh, we'll move on to the second item, which is the confirmation of the special meeting of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee on, uh, number two of two thousand and twenty-four, dated the twentieth of June, two thousand and twenty-four. I move this, uh, minutes. Uh, do I have a seconda? Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, open up for discussion. No discussion, put it to the vote, all those in favour? Councillor Cullen?
Yes Chair, affirmative.
Um, so that's all of us, we've just, councillor Antonelli has just come moved, uh, come into the, the committee meeting. So, uh, that's carried. So now we'll move on to item three, which is the officer reports. And the first on the agenda is the event sponsorship, two thousand and twenty-four Indigenous Wild Food and Cultural Festival. Um, can I have the relevant officer come up please?
Hello, Carly Gregory, manager of marketing and promotions.
Thank you, Miss Gregory. Um, can I just, I've just got a couple of questions. Um, so I think I did read in there that it will be an occurring event, you're gonna try and get it as an occurring event?
That's everything we're aiming for, that it would be an annual event in our city. Um, it's already obviously an established event. Um, so for me, um, you know, one thing we're really aiming for, we have some amazing First Nations experiences and events that are run, uh, from groups like New Knuckle Yagura, that are based here in Red Bank Plains, but are being held outside the city. So we are working super hard to bring them back home, um, and show that we can support and grow these events in our city here.
Great, great. And was there a reason why they can't have it at, it was at Rockleigh in Brisbane?
Um, basically because as part of our event attraction, we had identified it as an event that we thought should sit in Ipswich, that we could, um, you know, put in our festivals, which has a whole leveraging campaign and enables a marketing arm that they're not otherwise getting. They're a standalone event currently. Um, and I, I, I think they were very gracious and came and spoke to us multiple times and eventually agreed that it would be great to bring it back to Ipswich.
And they are a Red Bank Plains registered business, which I'm super excited that it's a whole package.
Yeah, it's fabulous.
Yeah.
And look, um, you know, it has been a negotiation. Um, we had put forward some potential venues, um, and we've come up with one that they're, they're really happy with and we're really happy with because it's in the city. It also supports another, you know, um, venue in our city, being the Turf Club, so that's great for them as well. So, yeah, really great with the outcome.
Great, great. Um, the only, the last question I've got, I've just got to read it out because it was in the report. So the recommendation includes in-kind support through the completion of an independent impact study by an industry, uh, specific market research organisation. I'm just saying, I'm just, um, trying to get, uh, clarification on the word recommendation. So like recommendation, is it, will it be done or we're gonna certainly?
Yeah, so we, um, as we do with lots of events that we support and sponsor in the city, we would really like some detailed intel that's actually data-driven around this event, because at the moment it's quite anecdotal. Yes, we have some ticketing information and that kind of thing that we've taken on board. Um, they haven't, this group, done an event impact study on this event previously. And I think the reality is, this event, um, is well-known, well-regarded and would be absolutely, um, entitled to funding streams outside councils.
Yeah.
And we can think of some off the top of our head, but we would need that event impact study to help support that. So as part of our capacity building, while they did ask for more cash, what we're proposing is cash support based on we, we think's a fair assessment of our assessment. We didn't think it was worth the thirty K in cash. But we had put forward, we could support them with an in-kind, as in the event impact study. We would have that info to build with our data of what happens with events in the city, but also it would enable them to secure funds from other streams.
Yeah, and make it, yeah, going forward as well, that's great. Thank you.
And in time, we would absolutely put a dollar figure to that, but we currently have a tender out for event impact.
Okay.
Research, so once that's finalised, we'll have an exact dollar figure on the value of that as well as in-kind.
Thank you, that's great. Anyone else got, yep Deputy Mayor?
Uh, in accordance with section one fifty EQ of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Nicole Johnic informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item number three, event sponsorship, two thousand and twenty-four Indigenous Wild Food and Cultural Festival. I, um, have no, uh, relation to the party named for the grant. However, the location for the event proposed is Ipswich Turf Club, and I am an executive, um, the treasurer of the Board of the Ipswich Turf Club Incorporated. So I will, um, propose that I leave the meeting and not vote on the content. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks for, um, alerting the meeting that soon as you knew. Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Um. Have we got any more questions for Miss Gregory?
Yes, through the Chair. Um, just looking at the, um, obviously in the past, we've had really great events at Harding's Paddock as well. Um, was there a consideration for this event to be at Harding's Paddock rather than the Turf Club?
Uh, yeah, I think it's part of our review of Galvanise last year in the cultural and country event. Fabulous event, fabulous location, quite challenging to, to get to Harding's Paddock though, I think, for a festival like that.
No public transport.
No public transport, um, quite challenging, multiple public transport if you did need to get there, so accessibility was an issue. Um, even though we love, love the venue, um, and just not visible too. It's really hard to encounter, you're not just driving past and happen to see it there. So we'd already had a review to say if we were continuing with cultural and country, we were going to look at an alternate site. Um, for us, this is the ultimate goal of having a First Nations-led event within the festival, which is fabulous.
Um, in the report, it talks about, um, a thirty thousand dollar grant. Is that what, is that what they applied for? And then with council's own assessment?
Correct. So, yeah, um, thirty thousand dollars is what they applied for. We, um, obviously looked at what they'd had previously, which was twenty thousand dollars from Brisbane City Council. We looked through the assessment. Um, I would say that this assessment was slightly underdone for thirty thousand dollars in terms of economic benefit, even though the social benefit is immense. Um, and the panel came back to me to sort of basically say that why they'd chosen the twenty-one, twenty-one five hundred was, that was around the cost of staging, lighting, the workshop, so that the real core infrastructure to bring that event to our site, because those things aren't, um, built into the venue that they're choosing.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Any more questions?
Yeah, it's not more, not more of a, just a confirmation. We Care used to actually be based in the, pretty much the centre of Ipswich years ago. They used to be where Alara, uh, currently have their operations there on Salisbury Road, used to be where We Care ran their operations. So, um, um, I'm not sure when they moved out to Red Bank Plains, but they did originate very strongly in Ipswich and also had a connection with the Perga, um, elders out there at, uh, at Perga.
Yeah, in my time with dealing with them here at council, they've been based at Red Bank Plains.
Right, okay.
So New Knuckle Yagura, so not, um, doubting that, but they may have moved the premises. That's where I understand the care arm is based these days, yeah.
Very good, come.
Thank you, thank you, Miss Gregory. Okay, so I move the recommendation as listed. Um, do I have a seconda? Mayor Harding, open up for discussion? Um. I am pleased to have this event as part of the Galvanise Festival of Heritage Programme. It's, it's great to see an event, um, that has been operating for four years in Brisbane relocate to Ipswich. So kudos to Ipswich, woo. Um, the heritage, um, of what's going to happen stems back sixty-five thousand years. Um, and the learnings, um, and the participation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander culture will be great for the city. And I'm very much looking forward to this event, uh, with tradition, traditional performance workshops, ceremonies and cooking demonstrations of wild and traditional foods. Um, and I think councillor Antonelli, are you, you up for the traditional foods if there's any Wichita Grubs?
I'll eat anything.
Great, and that's what you're told about lunchtime. Um, okay, so, uh, put that to the vote, all those in favour?
May I also have a discussion?
Oh, sure. Thanks Mayor Harding, oh, sorry, there we go.
Thank you Chair, I think it's really great to see, um, Ipswich attract that, this, um, annual event that adds value, uh, it's, sorry, sorry, that values the history and culture of Indigenous Australians in our community and, and come, become part of the Galvanise, which is our Festival of Heritage Programme. I see it's as a maturing of that festival. Well, this festival is produced by an Ipswich-based Indigenous business. This event has been held for the past four years outside of Ipswich. So this will support our goal of having First Nation-led events and replace a council-produced activity, as well as potentially attract more than four thousand five hundred visitors and locals to the event. So I think it's a really great maturing of, of the programme, and I think it's really to be commended and I look forward to it. And yes, I'll eat anything as well. I'll be there with you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so I put it to the vote, all those in favour? Oh, did you want to speak? No?
I was just going, I was just going to reiterate exactly what the mayor said.
Okay.
Um, specifically, We Care has been a great organisation, it's been around since the nineties here in Ipswich, may, maybe even before. Um, and where they've come from to even now, it's just exceptional that they've been able to produce, um, this, um, this event. And, um, and yes, it's great to have it back at Ipswich, um, and yeah, look forward to it, I support it.
Great. Councillor Cullen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, being in Ipswich for many, many years and, uh, understanding that there's so many of our own Ipswichian Indigenous folk that are, um, part of the wild food, there's, you'd be surprised how many different folks make wild, um, food, Indigenous food from bush food, bush tucker, and it's, uh, really good to see it come back.
Great, thanks councillor Cullen. There's no one else that wants to speak? I'll move, um, that, that report. Um, all those in favour? Councillor Cullen?
Affirmative.
Great, that's carried. So we'll move on to item four of the officer's report, which is the quarterly event sponsorship and ticket allocation report. Do we have any questions for the relevant officer? Any questions? No, me either. Great. Oh, you do? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Miss Gregory.
Carly Gregory, manager of marketing and promotions.
Uh, yeah, I, I know I've asked this question before, I think in previous committee, but I'm still trying to get my head around. Um, because each of the big, um, event sponsorship, um, that we do support with large sums of money, um, I'm just, they're all, obviously, we give different amounts to each one. So it doesn't appear to be, uh, an agreed level that we just give X for this, X, uh, Y for that. So how, how do you come to, um, formulate, uh, the money for this? And by the way, I'm, I'm certainly not questioning, um, the importance of this event. I'm just, it's just the formula behind it.
Yeah, so something like Winter Nats you're referring to, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so Winter Nationals would probably be, um, would probably deliver the second highest economic benefit to the city of events that we have at the current time. Um, while it has reduced post-COVID, it absolutely, from what we can see on the early figures for this year, is back in growth, which is awesome. I think they had just under thirty-six thousand attendees this year. The highest we've had, I think in twenty nineteen or since twenty nineteen was just under thirty, so it's great to see that growth. At the moment, we have a series of officers around council that have trained in this assessment. So from different teams, different expertise, they sit on panels and assess these events. Um, there's a ranking system. We obviously don't put the full assessment in the reports. Um, and then a recommendation is brought back to, in our case, the city events team, who check that, ask any questions, um, and it, it assesses the economic, the social benefit, and it's based on their submission. Um, so what they can prove, it's going to deliver what it does in economic benefit in attendees from outside the region. So it's hitting all of those goals that we're trying to achieve um, in city events and destination and economic development.
And, am I still on?
Yep.
Um, and, and what did they actually apply for? Is there, doesn't appear to be in the report.
This is just to receive a note as a quarterly, so the actual report came much earlier in the year. So all that detail is in those reports.
Oh, right, okay.
If I can remember correctly, I'm pretty sure that what Willow Bank requested was delivered, the thirty-five thousand.
Oh, okay, yep.
Yeah, off the top of my head, and that is because it does deliver an economic benefit, yes.
All good. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Gregory. Um. Yep, so I, um. Move the recommendations, um, A to C. Do I have a seconda? Um, Mayor Harding, thank you. Open up for discussion? Um.
Just note obviously how great the Winter Nats were, beautiful weather, perfect weather, new drag strip. Um, and it was, you know, great, great, successful weekend. Um, also note the, the Ipswich District Teacher Library Network, and especially the support for the Story Arts Festival, how, uh, popular that is. And it's great to see the council continue to support that.
Thank you, Mayor Harding. Um, I would also like to reiterate those, um, those sentiments. Um, the Winter Nationals was a place to be early in June. Um, councillor Cullen, you're listening to this? If you're into your Top Fuelers, your Ex Pro, your Nitro Funny Cars, Top Door Slammers, Pro Alcohol, Top Fuel Motorcycles, Pro Stocks, Pro Stock Bikes, or your Fuel Top Pro Mode, this was the place for you. There was something for everyone, and for me, my internal organs and ears are still recovering from the Nitros. But with that, that event, um, we're hoping that we'll break records attendance. Um, we haven't done the final acquittal, but hopefully it'll be around there thirty-five. Um, so let's look out for that. So, yeah, and the, um, Arts Festival, um, which will be held in the fourth to the eighteenth of August, am I correct in saying that? Yes. Um, yeah, so, and it's, that event is held every two years. So I'm very supportive of that event as well. So. Have we got any more? No? Okay, so I'll put it to the vote, all those in favour? Councillor Cullen?
Yes, affirmative.
Great. Um, that one is unanimously carried. So I'll move on to item five of the officer's report, which is the Ipswich Central Revitalisation Six Monthly Report, June two thousand and twenty-four. Um. Can we have that relevant officer come up please? Hello, if you can just state your name and your title?
Erin Marchant, place manager for Ipswich Central.
Thanks, Miss Marchant. Um, it, my questions that happen within the, the, um, the centre here, um. One of the things, I, I am a little bit, little bit, um, concerned about is when I read there's a lot of, uh, car spots being taken away to put in different things, um. I, I only raise it as a, an issue, um, because I, I've been going around to a lot of events and I've come into the city really late to get to events and there's hardly any car spots. Are we doing anything to promote our Nicholas Street Car Park instead? Do you know?
Yeah, so, um, currently I'm working with the asset and infrastructure team on that. Um, it is one of the deliverables coming up this year for us, um, in the precinct. It's really important, we are underutilised with this car park at the moment in the Nicholas Street precinct. It's really important for us that we actually drive our traffic to park here because we know that walkability is the key to economic development. So we want people to park here and be able to walk around the city, which is why in the report, um, we talk about the Ipswich Central partnership and some of the work that they've done with the, um, drop-off zone with the Civic Centre. And just changing those signs to a loading zone which allows people to drop the children off and then go and park. But then that also allows us to walk up through the city, through Ipswich, um, through the Nicholas Street precinct, through the top of town, get a coffee, grab something to eat and really support our local businesses. So we are really trying to drive that and that's definitely something on the agenda for this year.
Great, and I think that's a good, good strategic, um, little thing that you're doing that, yeah, now that I, but it's just, it's just that, that little of that, um, making people aware that it's there.
Yeah.
To be able to get that walkability through and see our beautiful city here.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that, that was my only, I love all the different things that's happening. I just was, that was the only thing that I was a little bit.
Yeah, and there's lots of potential with the car park and we can, you know, fill that up and get lots of people here. So there's lots of things to see and do, so we just need to work together to get there.
Awesome, awesome. Any other questions?
Yes, if I could.
Yes.
I think it was Marchant. Um, I know the street patio trial has come to an end and it's staying at, so I want Monte Lane at this stage. How long do you think it'll be there?
So we are undertaking the guidelines, the policy and the procedure for how we use the street patio moving forward. Um, it was always going to be a test trial and scale opportunity. So we, we're hoping to have something by the end of the year to come back to council with and, um, be able to work with the businesses in the meantime about how we do that. And we'll take you, take the councillors and yourself on the journey of what we're thinking about to make sure that, you know, you're across all the details and where we might go with that.
So in the meantime, is the street patio staying at Monte Lane?
It is staying at Monte Lane, yes.
And, um, have businesses around there been consulted, they're okay for it to stay?
They have, they've been very supportive. Um, obviously for Monte Lane, a business that wouldn't normally open on a Sunday has now turned that into like a Fiesta on a Sunday where people come and they have the music. And initially with the street patio, we had, we did have some funds dedicated to activating the street patio and having a musician and so forth. But now Monte Lane has taken that over and they're doing that themselves. So they're actually moving forward and we've built some business capability with them, dealing with the artists and making sure that they've got the right mix of people coming to the business.
Thank you, Miss Marchant.
Anyone else? Councillor Cullen?
Uh, I'm all good, I'm all good, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Marchant. Great, thank you. Um, so I, um. Sorry? Oh, nothing. Um, so I move the, to accept that report. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Antonelli, open up for discussion? Um, I'll just say that I'm very, uh, being in this role, I've been walking around the centre of Ipswich, um, quite a lot, especially with the Spark Festival, getting to all the different events. And I must say, one of the things that really has, um, surprised me is, can I say how clean our city is? We look, we are very clean. It's, it's, so that's one of the things that I, um, uh, have noticed. Um, and just all the little things that are happening, and I get lots of, so, so much good feedback from people from Brisbane. When they come here, they give me such good feedback. So everyone that's been doing stuff in the centre, the CBD, should really be commended that we get lots of good feedback. And I, probably the team already knows that, but I just wanted to let you know as well from a different point of view, so. Um, so yeah, so I'll just put that to the vote. Um.
May I have my, a few words?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor Harding.
Um, yesterday, um, yesterday morning, as you would know, Chair, um, the Nicholas Street Precinct received, um, the Queensland Government's Ministers Award for Urban Design, uh, as well as another design, another, another award for Movement and Place. So yesterday morning, uh, the Chair and I were at Queensland Parliament, where they have the annual Ministers Awards for Urban Design. And Nicholas Street Precinct was the only, um, project that received two awards. So one was for Movement and Place. And then we won the, um, the highest award, which is the Urban Design Award, uh, proving that our revitalised CBD is a beacon of best practice and is enriching the fabric of Ipswich while setting the highest standard for sustainable urban development. I want to congratulate everyone. We had some of the, not just the council team, um, but, you know, Buckland and the architects and the, um, landscapers there as well. Um, it was really great to see the, the team there together. Um, so I want to congratulate everyone who's been part of the project, especially the community and the businesses who've been consulted and been part of this and supported the vision to bring the beating heart back to our city centre. We've had, as this report shows, we have eleven new businesses opening their doors in East Street Central since November two thousand and twenty-three. And six additional trees now have fairy lighting installed, making our Brisbane Street sparkle. Um, the highly successful East Street Central Revitalisation Project was awarded the two thousand and twenty-three Australian Street Art Award, Silver for Best Community Live, Community Art for Living, Breathing Gallery. Um, and also, um, the two thousand and twenty-four Innovator of the Year for the Small Business Friendly Awards with the Queensland Government for creating places for people, not cars. So it's really great to, to see that happen. And, um, I really want to commend the East Street Central partnerships. They have been this wonderful community organisation who take time, you might, if we have the Stedfords, you see them out there on a Saturday morning, um, encouraging people to walk up Limestone Street, Brisbane Street and around the centre, the area for, for coffee and, and to, you know, the art gallery and the libraries as well. Um, they have, um, I guess worked with us to have a drop-off zone at the Stedfords and, at the Civic Centre and making sure that, um, we've had some car parks put aside for a loading zone there and encouraging people to park here in the Nicholas Street Precinct as well, which is great for businesses. So, you know, really encourage those partnerships and it's great to see civic pride, um, coming back as well.
Great. Um, I was going to also, um, acknowledge the awards that we had yes, we received yesterday. I didn't know if it was to go underneath because it was the Nicholas Street Precinct that won the award. And so, yeah, I was going to talk about it in the next report, but.
My apologies Chair.
No, no, all good, all good. No, it's, it's, this is about the team and the award and everyone that's, uh, put in. I, I said, like, I said, as I said yesterday, I was just there for the gravy. I got the accolades and I've done nothing. So all of the, the staff, the contractors, the, this, you know, the CEO, councillor Doyle, past councillor Fekner that's been part of this, um, really needs to take the accolades for this. I just got the trophy. So, um, so it's, it was a really good, um, uh, award to get. Um, Minister Scanlon, she, uh, quote, um, advised us that she took a walk down the precinct a couple of weeks ago and just blown away, um, of just what she witnessed. She thought it was just spectacular and hence why we got the top award. So everyone should give themselves a high five on this one. So well done to everyone. Thank you. Anyone else? Um, no one else? All right, so I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Cullen?
Affirmative Chair, yes, thank you.
Great, that's moved unanimously. Um, so now we move on to item six, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct, June Retail Subproject Steering Committee Report. Um. Do we have any questions? Is that you Sonia? Who's that one?
Um, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions or? No questions? Okay, I'll move to accept the report. Um, do I have a seconda? Thank you Mayor Harding. Open for discussion? Thank you, Mayor Harding. Open for discussion. Just reiterate our comments before, both what myself and Mayor Harding said about the precinct, so, um. Anyone else? No one? Yep, Mayor Harding, thank you.
Thank you. I'm very excited that we have reached a significant milestone, uh, this past month with the handover to Hoyts, our anchor tenant in the former Birch Cowling Coil building on, on Thursday, the twentieth of June. I'd like to warmly welcome Hoyt's Ipswich and we are now another step closer to the transformation of our CBD from a rundown abandoned mall to a vibrant family-friendly place for people to gather. Work can be entertained, which is always the plan, uh, for, for this mall. As we head towards the end of this redevelopment, we have stayed focused on delivering a city heart that allows Ipswich to reach its potential as a destination of choice for both locals and visitors to have fun.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, just reiterating what the mayor said, I think with these awards, it really shows what vision, um, was, was put into this precinct and what, uh, detail to such a top quality, professional fitting and finishing for us to receive these awards is just testament to what a top idea, strategic plan, everything was in place, so, yeah. Again, kudos to everyone involved. Um, so no other, no, I'll put that one to the vote. Um. All in favour? Councillor Cullen?
Affirmative.
Okay, okay. That's unanimous and carried. Um, so now we move on to item seven, which is the final report, which is the, um, Nicholas Street Precinct Approval of a Lease for Upper Ground Floor, one forty-three Brisbane Street. Could I please have the? It was a report, it was a late report. Um, it was sent, was it yesterday? Um. Where did I get that? So I suggest that we, um, we'll move into a closed session because of, um, some confidential, um, matters in there, so I'll just, um, move that in accordance with section two fifty-four J, three CG and I of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve. The meeting moved into closed session discuss, to discuss item seven titled Nicholas Street Precinct Approval of Lease for Upper Ground Floor, one forty-three Brisbane Street. Uh, do I have a second for that? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, so we'll move into closed session. All right, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour, uh, councillor Cullen? Is he still there?
Affirmative, Chair, affirmative.
You're still there, awesome. Um. So, do we? Thank you for those online. We've just returned to open session from discussing matters that are confidential. Um, so I move to ex, to, uh, accept the report of the Nicholas Street Precinct Approval for the Lease of Upper Ground Floor, one forty-three Brisbane Street. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Antonelli. Um, open for discussion. Mayor Harding?
If I may, I'll, I'll read out one line from the confidential report. I think it's, it's not breaching anything, but it's very important for us as we receive, uh, professional advice on, on valuations and, uh, we analyze the four B model. It does say from Knight Frank that the proposed rental was considered to be within market parameters and reflects the accommodation standard and refurbished nature of the building, so that's probably an important part for us as we, um, apply due diligence, uh, to the, to, um, maximise the, um, return for ratepayers.
Great. Um, I think this tenant is a great one for forty-three Brisbane Street and I'll be supporting this tenancy. Have we got anyone else? No? Councillor Cullen?
No, all good, thank you.
Uh, great. So I put that to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Cullen?
Affirmative.
Great, that's passed unanimously. So. Where are we up to? So we move on to notice of motion, nil. Any matters arising? Nil. We'll close the meeting, um, at, what is it? One twenty-four and I move that the Environmental and Sustainability Committee commence at one thirty-four? Yep, you're good with that? Great. Um. Do I have to put that to the vote? No, I've got it on my thing yet, but, um, great, yep, we close the meeting and good luck.